One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. I'd like again to welcome you all. I ask that you silence your phones as for least amount of interruptions. We'll call this meeting to order. Angie, do we have any citizens' comments?
No.
All right. Item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners' Court on January 8th, 2019.
Hearing and Judge, I move that we accept the minutes as presented for Commissioners' Court regular session of January the 8th, 2019. I second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Geisland, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the minutes as presented for January 8th, 2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Item passes. Item number two, consider and take action to accept all 2019 elected officials' bonds to be filed in the county clerk's office. Ann Marie or Rebecca?
We just had the bonds for this year that were done through court last week. I don't think I will look at them, but it's quite a number of them.
No reason not?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
No questions.
If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the 2019 elected officials' bonds. All those in favor? Item passes. Item three, consider and take action to accept the racial profiling report from the Henderson County Constable Precinct 1 for filing purposes only. We do have that in our backup. This is our annual responsibility that we get from our law enforcement offices. Are there any questions? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved.
I second his motion.
Motion by Commissioner Geisland, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, to approve, to accept the racial profiling report from Constable 1 for filing purposes only. All those in favor? Item passes.
This is a requirement for all constables, isn't it?
Yes, sir, it is. To my understanding, it is. All law enforcement.
I mean, the sheriff does one in total.
Yes, sir.
What is the timeframe that these are due by?
I believe it's due the first quarter, but Sheriff?
It's due by March 2019.
By March?
Okay. And that is federal requirement, correct?
Exactly. State requirement.
State. Okay.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Item number four, consider and take action to appoint members to the Henderson County Historical Commission. We have several members here with us today from the Historical Commission, and we have a list of the individuals provided for us in our packet. Sir Jane, Ms. Brown, or anyone from the Historical Commission like to stand up and visit with Well, given that, as I said, every two years, county's required to appoint the members of the Historical Commission, and as that, we have the list here. This is the same members from the previous two years, is that correct?
It's just like one added, it's three now.
Okay. Well, we do appreciate the time and the effort put forward into this. Are there any questions or comments?
I'd also like to thank them for serving, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the members that were appointed to the Henderson County Historical Commission.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to appoint the members of the Henderson County Historical Commission from the list that's been provided in our backup. Is there any further comments or discussion? Well, again, we thank the commission for its work and appreciate all that you do. With that being said, all those in favor? Item passes. Item number five, consider and take action to reappoint Place 4, Place 5, and Place 6 board members for the Henderson County Hospital Authority. Gentlemen, in your backup, we have the three nominees, and also I believe we have Mr. Bennett that's here with the authority. Mr. Bennett, if you would like to share with us?
Yeah, each of the board members that we seek to get reappointed, Dr. Doug Curran, Mark Smith, and Linda Brown, they've each served on the board for a number of years. They're very good board members, they're knowledgeable about the organs of the hospital authority, and they're very diligent in carrying out their task. So we ask the Board to reappoint.
Questions for Mr. Bennett?
No questions.
Well, before you sit down, how are things going between the relationship with the Authority Board and the new operation?
It's going fairly smooth. There's no major interruptions, and nothing has surfaced to say that there's been no complaints presented to our board.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any other discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Geisland, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, to reappoint for Place 4, Dr. Doug Curran, Place 5, Mark Smith, Place 6, Linda Brown, for the Henderson County Hospital Authority Board. All those in favor? Item passes. At this time, I would direct the attention of the court to our addendum on the agenda, which is 5A. That item is to consider and take action to reappoint two members to serve on the Henderson County Emergency Service District, Number 6, Board of Commissioners, with an appointment to expire on December 31, 2020, located in Precincts 3 and 4. Commissioner Geisland?
Yes, Judge, Gary Dennis and Ernest Smith have agreed to serve another two-year term on ESD Number 6. The court may remember that Ernest Smith was appointed about four or five months ago to fill out the term of retiring board member, and he is, at that time, he agreed to serve another two years at that time of his earlier appointment. No other comments that I can make. Chuck?
Questions, comments?
I think they're extremely diligent members of the ESD, and I think they'll make a good reappointment.
Especially since they can't raise the taxes anymore.
Well, if there's no further comments or discussion, entertain a motion.
I move to reappoint Gary Dennis and Ernest Smith to ESD 6, Board of Commissioners. I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Geisland, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to reappoint Mr. Gary Dennis and Mr. Ernest Smith to two-year terms expiring December 31, 2020, for ESD Number All those in favor? Item passes. Item number six, consider and take action on agreement to establish the collection of property taxes for the city of Frankston by the Henderson County Tax Office. We have Ms. Goodall with us, our tax assessor-collector, if you would like to speak on this.
Judge, they just want us to start doing their collections for the entities that they have in Henderson County. It's a total of 11 at this time, 11 accounts. We took the same 90 cent rate that we collect everywhere else, the majority of them.
Questions, comments?
We ever done those before for the city, never the first time?
Yes, whoever was doing their, does their stuff, has retired, and so there's no one there to do the ESDs of those.
Commissioner McCam?
What entities is it that file in Henderson County from the Henderson County?
We have some Athens School District, we have some Lebon School District.
They go over into Anderson County?
Yes, sir. And City of Frankston has Anderson County portion also, but Anderson's going to do their collections on those entities.
Mr. Geisland?
This is the Loomoak Estates. It's a strange annexation of the Frankston city limits, which goes out 155 and then veers off to the west, and as Ms. Goodall stated, there are 12 properties within the Loomoak Ms. Goodall said that there was 11. I just said there was 12. I'm smiling.
That's why Frankston, city of Frankston.
Well, it's interesting, there was on Lot Number 2, there was 429 square feet that are actually in Henderson County, and I guess the City of Frankston didn't want to do a five-cent collection on that 429 square feet. The lot next to that only has 2,700 square feet, and the bottom line, there's only six complete lots with houses that we're collecting for, so I don't want anyone to think that I'll be talking about a huge increase in revenue to the tax office on these 90 cents that they're going to be collecting because I think you can see it's only going to be about $10. Do we, we do not, I'll ask it that way, we do not collect for the Frankston ISD, do we? Or we are, we are collecting for them?
Everything in Henderson County.
Okay. Because that is a much larger number, because the Frankston ISD runs all the way over to almost Coffee City, so there's a lot of parcels in that regard.
Any further comments? Entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Geisland, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the agreement to establish collection of property taxes for the city of Frankston. All those in favor? Item passes.
Could it be stated in that motion that for the city of Frankston, for properties in Henderson County? Can you add that? For properties in Henderson County? So the record doesn't seem as if we're collecting taxes for the city of Frankston in Anderson County.
Commissioner Thomas?
Sounds good.
You agree with it?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number seven, consider and take action on a request for the county to refund payment in the amount of $716.87 for the item purchased in, a item purchased in auction from Henderson County. Ms. Nichols?
Yes, sir. In last summer, we did an auction.
Sorry, Nicholson, sorry.
Yes. We did an auction, it ended August 31st. Four Conex containers or railcars were sold in that auction. One of the gentlemen who purchased it has not been able to find a company that will move the container for him, so he has respectfully requested a refund. The total sale of the container, including tax and commission to the auction company, was $838.94. Henderson County actually received $716.87, which would be the amount that we would be able to return to compensate for that cost reduction.
Questions?
I know he bought, just from reading the information that was sent out, I know he bought it as is.
Yes, sir.
But if you can't move it, if it's a danger to move, that makes it different. Have y'all got that information, Sheriff, that it can't be moved?
Well, so I believe there was four of them in auction. There was two of them that had been moved and transported, and we actually moved all four units from where they were to where they're currently sitting now for the expansion of the evidence room. I just think he hasn't found the right.
So they do have holes in them, like the letter states, and they're rot?
That produced a one, when we're talking about the wood bad in it. The wood needs to be replaced, but all the ivies underneath the wood, they're all in good shape. I mean, he needs to lay plywood. Someone would need to lay plywood down on the floor.
I got you.
The auction, the auction said the buyer needs to come check out the piece of equipment.
Yes.
I mean, that's due diligence when you're buying from an auction, is you go check it out, I mean, or it's up to you.
Right. And they had opportunity to leave the information on how to schedule that, where the items order is provided from day one of the auction, so.
Have we had that before, Jennifer, where a piece of equipment, some of them wasn't?
Not in the, not in the time that I've been doing it.
I got you.
And I'm not aware of any time before either, so.
Commissioner Geisland?
Now, just for clarity, there are holes in the side of the container, relatively easy to repair. Flat washer bolt and a little bit of sealant would fix all of the holes in the side. Wasn't a problem for the sheriff's department because it was next to the building where it was currently being used, and therefore, and there's probably a bit of a roof, because as the sheriff stated, there's a rotten area. I think the court needs to understand, there is a rotten area. The rotten area is not as large as that desk. It's about a quarter of that, and it is easily too, easy to put in a new plywood floor on the superstructure that is there. I have mixed emotions on this due to the fact that the reason he wants to be refunded isn't true. He can be moved. It's a steel structure. It has a steel ceiling, steel walls, steel doors, and a steel superstructure. It can be picked up with a crane, or it can be picked up with a rubber tire loader with forks. Matter of fact, I went out myself and looked at it because if we refund it so the sheriff can have a clean yard, I was going to then talk to Nichols, is it? Ms. Nicholson, you see about transferring it to Precinct 4 just to kind of help the sheriff clean up his yard. But it was also noted that there's another one that hasn't been picked up.
Yes, and I found out about that after this item was placed on the agenda, and I have not been able to make contact with the buyer.
How long do they have after auction to pick up?
Seven days.
And how long has it been?
August 31st.
Because Precinct 4 is very interested in the other one.
Are they together? Are they side by side or right there?
They're side by side. They're sitting side by side outside of the fence.
My thought was, you know, I was going to vote to refund, but now I'm kind of thinking maybe he should get it, so I didn't look at it. I'm just going by the letter, but if he can get it, Sheriff?
Well, I mean, the sad, the sad thing about it is, Commissioner, is the amount of money that he is asking to refund, which is $716.87. We have paid a lot more than that, about five times that, for containers in this condition to store materials in the past. So I don't really understand the deal here.
Is this an item that we want to deliberate further on?
Well, it's okay. It's okay with me if we delay until we find the status of the other one, what's happening And I say that only so that if we find the same situation as there, so we make exactly the same decision with both buyers, rather than making the decision today on this particular buyer, and then we see two weeks from now or whenever the other one's in the same situation so that we could make a blanket decision on both containers. And it isn't transferring to Precinct 4, that's not the reason for that delay.
No, no, no.
It is, is treating the two different buyers the same way.
Same way. I agree. Are they in the way, Sheriff? Were there?
No, so we've got them on the outside.
Oh, it's not?
We've got them on the outside.
Something we have to decide today?
They're not hardening things in there. And we've been, we've been communicating with them on a regular basis, trying to get it picked up.
Right. Well, let's just do that, and then let's go ahead and just skip over this, and once we find the status on the other one, bring it back. Item number eight, consider and take action on adopting a donation policy for the Henderson County Animal Shelter. Court, you will remember this, previously we had discussions concerning the dollar amount that we would have brought before Commissioners' Court or allow a donation to be accepted at the facility, given that state law requires the acceptance of all donations to be brought through Commissioners' Court. We need to get this finalized. We had a discussion on it previously, but the court never did take full action. Our county attorney, Clint Davis, is with us. Mr. Davis, if you would, any background information you'd like to give the court concerning this?
The Commissioners, Geisland and McCam probably know and they were aware in presence at a workshop. I did update Commissioner Thomas, sent him the previous email that I had sent to the other Commissioners explaining what we needed to do, but I don't have a whole lot to hand up with what you do. We need to have some system or mechanism in place where the court has some oversight into the donations that are being paid at the shelter. Instead of a dollar amount threshold, that could be whatever you guys choose to allow employees to go ahead and accept it, with some reporting requirement back to the court as a goal as to what those donations are. I had suggested in my previous email that we do that monthly, and that's up to the court. You know, the dollar amount threshold and how often you guys wish to receive those reports, that would be up to the court.
Questions of Mr. Davis?
Yeah, I remember the discussion exactly as you stated, and I couldn't remember the dollar amount. I know it wasn't less than two, and I think it's, as best I can recollect, it wasn't greater than three. It was somewhere between $200 and $300, because the issue was, we didn't want to bring to court when someone brought in some blankets or a dog transfer box.
Three rolls of hay.
Three rolls of hay, which we had on the court agenda at the end of last year. And, you know, it ran through my mind then, how did this hit that threshold? But I didn't realize we hadn't voted on it, so.
Most of the donations are that type of stuff, dog food, blankets?
And I think blankets and.
Not so much money.
That pay additional.
Oh, do?
No, I think they do have, I don't know if any C or G's do have, but I think we've had people that actually pay additional monies, that if they're to feed your service, they may give an extra $5, $10, $15, $20.
I got you.
And that was a situation that was, that we discussed, even on the items that Commissioner Geisland just stated, is you don't want to have to tell someone that's trying to make that type of donation, "Sorry, we can't accept that today. Let me get that put on the Commissioners' Court agenda next Tuesday, and then maybe you can come back by with your $10 or your bag of dog food, because we all know what's going to happen."
Exactly.
They're not going to mess with it. So we're trying to accommodate the people that are nice enough to support us.
And they have a sheet that they sign in, what they donated, usually like, they buy a bag of dog food that their dog doesn't want to eat, and they bring that open bag into us. Their dog passes away, they bring the supplies that we're able to use, or we're able to pass on to an operator.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Bynum, our county treasurer, what have you seen as far as what's your recommendation on the threshold?
Personally, just my recommendation, just because of what I've seen that's come through my office, I would like to see us set it at at least $300 to raise it to the court. And my reason for that is because I feel like that often we could be back here consistently. Just, I think, a $300 is a good amount. Actually, when we did the workshop, I think on the tape plane, we did have a minute, but in Mary Margaret's office, there was a tape there, and I think that we discussed $250 being a dollar amount, but just since then, since time has passed, I just, my recommendation is 301 and up. And again, if you want to look at 250, that's good as well, but also, as county attorney said, I think that that is something that needs to be presented, or some type of reporting needs to come to the court at least once a month. That would be my recommendation.
As far as the reporting as well, be done monthly?
Reporting as well.
Questions for Mr. Bynum?
Sounds good.
Ms. Lambert wishes to speak.
The highest donations we got came to the shelter at Christmas time. We had, did have a $300 donation, which is rare, and a $500 donation. I haven't seen any more than that.
Any further discussion on this item?
If, if listening to the tape, it said that we said 250, I say we stay at 250. My, my feeling is on cash donations, it's, that's a little bit different than folks that their animal has had to be put down, or the animal has passed, and they have supplies, and they want to bring that to the shelter and donate it. I think cash donations, whether it be 300, 500, or whatever, that needs to be treated just a little bit differently. I'm not saying $10 additional for the services rendered. Cash I look at a little bit differently than hard items, walls of hay. So I like the 250, and I'd also like the monthly report.
If we can get that monthly report a part of the court process when the other financials are presented, that way it's put into record.
I work with, I work with them on that.
Okay.
But I mean, I'll go with 300 if that's what the rest of the Commissioners want.
I'll go with 250. 250 sounds good. 251 or?
If it's over 251, then it has to come to the court, to use Michael's example of 301.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, oh, we need a motion, sorry.
I'll move that, I don't know where we're, is this going to be part of the policy, or is this?
When they draw up the policy, is this going to be?
But I read your email this morning, on say, policy. So where is this going to be recorded, that any, is it, is it, help me with the motion here, county attorney?
So, no, I think this is separate and aside from any operations policy that they may have, and you may later wish to incorporate this into an operations policy if you get that for. But I think right now, the action I- But I think right now, the action item is to establish a policy by which we allow employees of Henderson County Shelter to accept donations in the amount of $250 and less until approval can be made by the court.
Okay. Do you want to turn that into a motion?
Okay, the item before us is to establish a donation threshold of $250 for collection at the animal shelter without court approval, and the requirement of monthly reporting of said donations.
Monthly recording of said donations.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Geisland, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve what Mary Marger... Okay.
What you're going to read back to it.
To approve the motion before us, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, item passes. Item number nine, consider and take action on transfer of computer and monitor from indigent health department to the fire marshal environmental crimes office. Ms. Nicholson?
Mr. Rebarth has new employees that started January 1st. The indigent health office is not currently utilizing a monitor or computer, so in an effort to keep from expending funds, the transfer from the indigent health department to the fire marshal's office.
Questions? We'll remind the court and for Commissioner Thomas, when we granted the extra, or the new position to fire marshals, we did not, purposely, we did not provide for the computer and desk and things, just given the, the nature of the new position being brought in. We would backfill with items that we have and with the condensing of the veterans and indigent health together, combining those responsibilities, we had the extra monitor and computer. So, any further comments? If not, entertain a motion.
When, well, I have a question. When this is moved over to the fire marshal, then that'll be part of the refresh cycle for the fire marshal?
It will because it's currently in refresh cycle.
Okay. So if we would need another computer for indigent health in the future, we would have to buy another one then?
We'd have to purchase because it'd be additional.
Right, okay. Just so you realize that by doing the donation, his will be refreshed and you won't have anything to be refreshed per the IT policy.
Yes, sir.
I just didn't want you to be surprised later on down the road.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion that we transfer the computer and monitor from the indigent health department to the fire marshal's crimes office.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the transfer of computer, computer and monitor from indigent health department to the fire marshal's office. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 10, consider and take action on transfer of vehicle from the sheriff's office to the fire marshal's office. Sheriff or fire marshal, would you like to speak to it?
This is what we talked about in the budget workshop, the new position we talked about that started January 1st, and this was the vehicle we found that we could transfer to the fire marshal's office. It's in the working condition, wouldn't be used until January 1st, so...
Fire marshal?
Yeah, exactly what he said, this is the vehicle for the condition and we're able to utilize it, but I haven't spent any budget money on the vehicle at this time.
Does this have to have the detail of decals put on?
Around now, it does not, or have any lights or anything like that, but that's something I'm working on.
Is it black?
It is not.
Oh, dear.
But that's since I'm taking donations, if you want to paint it, I'll take that as well.
Run them through the animal shelter and...
Any further questions? If not, entertain a motion.
I move a transfer of the 2010 pick forward pickup from the sheriff's department to the fire marshal's department.
I'll second it, Mr. Bishop.
Motion by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Geisland, to transfer vehicle from the sheriff's office to the fire marshal's office. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 11, consider and take action on Eustace ISD tax resale deed for lot 54 in Log Cabin Estates, Section 2, located in Precinct 1. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, Judge and Court, some of these have came up in my precinct that, also in the Eustace ISD, and they have approved these resale properties. Actually went out last week after talking to Lauren about these locations, and they're all in the Log Cabin area, they're off FM 3054. They're pretty much lots that have just been sitting there, they're not doing anything for us, they're, they're not improved, they're basically just lot, this particular lot is in the Log Cabin subdivision, this one is, and I would think it would be good to get it back on the tax roll, sell it to whoever who's made this bid. I know it's a small bid, but it's a very unimproved lot, so I would be in favor.
Questions, questions for Commissioner Thomas?
No questions.
Entertain a motion.
Okay, long lack of motion that we, that we sell this property resale to, that was, see, the owner of this one is Deborah Vaughn, she made a bid of $112.50.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the tax resale deed for lot 54 in Log Cabin Estates. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Item 12, consider and take action on Eustace ISD tax resale deed for lot 50 of Oak Hill Park subdivision located in Precinct 1. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, Court and Judge, that is a, another lot, this actually is, same situation, it's an undeveloped lot, it's not very pretty, it's been sitting for a good while, it's a lot that I, I think it's valued at 1,500, they made a bid of 150, but I think it's a good bid, so I would recommend that we get it sold to, to this person and get it back on the tax roll.
Questions for Commissioner Thomas? If not, entertain a motion.
Okay, if there's not any questions, Judge, I'll make a motion, we approve the resale deed, lot, I guess that's lot 50 in Oak Hill Park, for the amount of $150 to Stephen Santos.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the tax resale deed for lot 50 in Oak Hill Park subdivision. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Item 13, consider and take action on Eustace ISD tax resale deed for 3.6 acres, tract 2G abstract 133, located in Precinct 1. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, Court and Judge, this one is a little different, I couldn't even get to it, the roads were so bad, I kind of, it's a large property, again, it's been approved by the U, the Eustace ISD, and I, I think would be good to go ahead and sell it for the bid that's been offered, and get this off our, their records and back on our tax.
Questions for Commissioner Thomas?
If there's not any questions, I'd like to recommend that we...
I did have a question on this one. It says at the time of the judgment in 2004, the property was valued at $9,600. So there's an adjustment at, at the appraisal district, taking it from the 18,970, down to the 9,600? Okay.
And it's pretty common with some of these properties where they, you'll see that either they double or they go down or up somewhere in the constant between judgment and when it struck off to Eustace ISD.
Okay, so the property has deteriorated substantially during the period of time that has been delinquent in the taxes. Because that isn't real clear in the documentation. That makes the, the bid more viable.
Right. It, the road I couldn't get to, you can kind of see where it's at, but it's very undeveloped lot, so trackable in.
And Ms. Montgomery, for everyone's information, would you explain this process again to those that might not understand? This is a judgment and a settlement on a piece of property, could you explain that?
Yes, sir. When we go into tax collections and we offer a property up for auction and it does not sell, it goes into a school same as an highest interest date property, which is, in other words, an struck off property. Eustace ISD will allow us to put them back up for resale at a sheriff's auction, or allow us to take private bids for the property that will have to be heard by Eustace ISD Board to be approved, and then come here for approval as well. They require a 7.5% bid at the current appraisal value if it is under $5,000. If it is under $5,000, if it is above $5,000, they require a 75% of the value for a guaranteed approval.
But the action here is actually the culmination and the ending point of a legal process. This is a settlement on that case? Because there's a lot of questions sometimes when we put these up or approve these, that the dollar amounts are way too low for them. So...
Well, the dollar amount that somebody bids on is completely at their discretion. I do not tell them what to bid, I tell them what is going to get them a guaranteed approval, but they are at their own discretion of approving, admitting whatever they locked, and then just like schools allowed to dismiss something, y'all as well are allowed to reject something if you don't see it bid.
But these are, these are properties that, these are properties that no taxes have been collected on since 2004.
Correct.
And what we're essentially doing is selling this property where we can put it back on the tax roll.
Right.
So...
And sometimes there's nothing collected, or depending on how low the bid is, but at least it gets a tax roll when it hasn't been there for 15, 20 years.
Yeah.
And you're starting to require taxes for it. Did I answer your question?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Any further questions?
Well, you know, Clint, you, this is a memory test, because I can't remember either. If we go back eight, nine, 10 years ago, when we were having those meetings with Henderson County Property Owners Association because of all of these vacant lots that were crack houses, overgrown, rodent infested, wasn't there, there was a large number that were basically sitting as the Eustace ISD, as the trustee, and they weren't moving on them? Wasn't it over 1,000 lots or...
Yeah, we had neighborhoods that had hundreds of lots in them, of course, I, you know, over the course of my time as county attorney, it's not just Eustace ISD.
Oh, no.
Other ISDs that were just as guilty, so the whole, it could sound like we're beating up on Eustace by saying that, but no, there was a considerable number of properties countywide that were held in trust by, by school trustees.
Thank you. The reason I brought that up, Judge, is because, I mean, you, you brought up a very valid point for the public, and when you see a $18,970 property that was devalued to half of that and now we're selling it for $1,000, we could say, oh, that's not enough money. But bear in mind, the property has been sitting there with no taxes being collected since 2004. If there's no taxes being collected, I can guarantee you, no one is out there mowing the grass. So the rodents, it's overgrown, it's a hazard to the community, and, and, and it's a hazard to the sheriff's department and what he's trying to do in clean up Henderson County, because these are the type of properties that people move in in the middle of the night and start doing illegal activities. So moving it for $1,000 gets it on the tax roll, and we hope, we pray, that this Stephen Santos will clean up this property and will bring it back to a value equal to or greater than what it was prior to 2004. And that's a benefit to the Eustace ISD and Henderson County and all the other taxing entities. End of editorial. Thank you for the time.
Yeah, and, and all the properties I've described earlier, go back to 2004, 2002, 2007, so we're talking about several years. And, and I went out, I like to go out and put my eyes on these properties, and, and they're, it's pretty tough, I mean, they're, they're in areas where they need, lots hadn't been touched, and it does...
Exactly.
They do need to be bought and maybe refurbished, so...
Any further comments? I would add that Eustace ISD, since our discussion almost two years ago, has taken great strides to move properties, and we, we do appreciate their efforts.
Absolutely. We have, we've praised Eustace ISD numerous times for their action on this court.
Well, with that, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Which one was it?
I'll second.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, motion made by Commissioner Geisland, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the tax resale deed for 3.6 acres, tract 2G abstract 133, located in Precinct 1. All those in favor? Item passes.
Just wanted to know how strongly I supported you.
Well, thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Item 14, consider and take action on Eustace ISD tax resale deed for lots 21, 22, 23, 24 in Oak Hill Park subdivision, located in Precinct 1. Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah, they're getting one or two. Actually, again, this one is same situation, there's four lots, they're all side to side, they're, they're in the same situation, they've been on, but these have only been since '14. But there's a fireworks stand on one of the lots, I mean, it's, and it looks like we need to move these. So this one is accumulation of four lots, like 21, 22, 23, and 24, they're valued at 364, he bid 112.50 on all, on each property, which brings a total of $450, I believe, for the four lots, so, again, I think it's good that we move these and get a tax collection on these.
Questions for Commissioner Thomas?
No questions.
Entertain a motion.
Okay, if there's not any questions, Judge, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the tax resale deed for, I guess that's lots 21, 22, 23, and 24 on Oak Hill Park, I believe we call that, for the amount of $450 total, 112.50 for each lot.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the tax resale deed for lots 21, 22, 23, 24 in Oak Hill Park subdivision located in Precinct 1. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you, Court.
Item 15, receive financial reports. Mr. Bynum? We do have financial report for JP 2, and I'll remind everyone, these will be available for viewing in the county clerk's office after court. Item 16, consider and take action on payroll dispersment or distributions and account cash sheet. Mr. Bynum?
Yes, Court, I've got the payroll, this is for, for, I will give approval on it if I can, please, sir.
Questions? Comments? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion... Motion by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the payroll distributions for biweekly number one. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Item 17, consider and take action on submitted contracts. Ms. Nicholson?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 18, consider and take action on requests for right-of-way permits.
Yes, sir.
Item 19, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Item 20, consider and take action on payment of bills.
Yes, sir. The total for 2018 this week is 318,407.33.
Commissioner Thomas, questions?
She answered my questions before court, Judge.
Commissioner McCam?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Geisler?
I was pleased to see that our OSSF compliance officer is submitting his inspection bills on a timely basis now. Sure have a lot of liability claims in this set of bills. The bills for STW, this training, that wasn't included as part of the contract? This was the training on requisitions. It was $159. I know the training was $140 an hour. This...
It's all part of the contract. It doesn't bill us any more than we need.
Oh, okay.
One additional.
I'm glad to see Judge McKinney, you're able to take credit on today's bills for Judge Sanders' good job in keeping the sprinkler at the courthouse under control at only $91 to keep that Saint Augustine ready to pop here in the spring. But on a more concerning note, I hope you'll not hold this against me, Chief. We are on the cusp of $20,000 for water at the jail. We are, before we pay the $19,155 bill for December at the Justice Center, we're 10% over budget. The budget was $150,000, just roughly. That should put us around $185,000, $190,000. Maybe that's a little bit high, for water for the jail. I think that's partial because the City of Athens raised the water rate again during this past year. Am I correct on that, Emery?
I'm not sure about them, so...
Something's driving...
Recently, recently they...
Yeah. I would ask the court to go back and maybe reconsider having the McKinstry Energy Group or the Way Company that gave us presentations back in '17, and one of those groups, can't remember which, was proposing that they could, through grants, help us reduce the amount of water usage in the jail. So I just think we need to make this a priority because when we're spending approaching $200,000 in water at one facility, we need to do something. Because I don't think we can negotiate like we have with electricity for a cheaper rate. And, you know, at some point in time, the Athens Municipal Water Authority might raise their rate to something higher than $48,000 a year, everything they can pump. I did have one other question. Sheriff, maybe you can help me here. You're using TransUnion for researches, background check information, I guess. It says November searches. It says TransUnion.
Yes, sir. That's the company that we use, that we do a lot of information gathering on individuals.
That's sort of what I thought it was. Didn't we, why aren't you using LexisNexis? Or is TransUnion a lot better than LexisNexis?
LexisNexis, we used to use LexisNexis and then they had, this was years ago, if I remember correctly, they had a security breach and we kind of stopped using them for a little while and then we used TLO now, which is TransUnion.
Which is TransUnion.
And, but I think they all use basically the same databases and the rate is pretty much set unless we go over a certain, certain usage rate.
Okay. Well, that makes sense. Well, the reason it jumped out, because we had a LexisNexis bill in the Fire Marshal's bill and then I saw TransUnion, and I think the JPs at one point in time were using LexisNexis. I would have thought we would all be using the same one and we might get a better rate. Just a thought, something we may want to look at.
Are we still using iPlow as well? Wasn't that...
iPlow is part of the collections system for the county attorney's collections department, and that's more about the collections. I don't think it's as much about checking backgrounds.
During research. Not background. I had no further questions on the 2018 bills.
We did have a request from Commissioner Thule to not approve one of the bills, which is on the compactor for Precinct 2, on the last page, in the amount of $531. I would ask that we not, that we remove that in this approval and when things become more settled in that discussion, we can re-present.
You want to avoid it and re-present or just hold it?
It will be up to the court, as if you want to hold it or just go ahead and non-approve. I'd like to see us not approve it at this point in time.
You know more about it than I do.
Yes, sir. It's just inactive service on a, or non-service on a rented compact. So that new bill, the new dollar amount, if we do that with that subtraction of the
So moved, Judge. Reproved those bills.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the bills in the amount of $317,876.73. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Next up.
For 2019 this week, we have a total of $42,025.63.
Commissioner Thomas?
No questions, Judge.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Geisler?
Sheriff, can you tell me exactly what RevCourt does? It's the remote access?
RevCourt is the recording system and dispatching 911. It records all communication, radio traffic, phone traffic, and dispatch.
Okay. And that's an annual payment we make to RevCourt. Okay. Thank you. I have one other question. I was a little bit concerned, Emery, you can help me here, on STW, where the extended support, as stated in the contract, was 47.50. I guess that starts January the 1st and then the annual software lease for the 19430. Is that, January the 1st will be paying that, January the 1st going forward? The reason I have a question on, I'm confused, because we signed the contract with STW back in September of '17. Then we made a payment to them in September the 14th. That was the big payment. And I was just trying to figure out why the annual payment starts rather than on a calendar year.
They start theirs, they just start theirs on a calendar year.
Oh.
And it's half the price that they pay us.
Yeah, well, I understand that. I just didn't think the annual cost would be necessarily on January the 1st. It would have been, since we signed the contract basically at the end of a fiscal year, a federal fiscal year, it would have started then as the annual payment from September to August.
I think they have everyone's name set up on it.
It was just surprising to see that because we just paid them back in September. No further questions, Judge?
Concern, let me find my spot here. Entertain a motion to approve the bills for 2019.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the bills in the amount of $42,025.63 for 2019's bills. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, Court. Item 21, consider and take action on submitted plats.
We have none.
Item 22, open and consider bids.
No bids, sir.
I was going to bring in two, sir.
No, no, no.
Please, sir.
Can I make that motion?
No, second.
Motion by Commissioner Cam, second by Commissioner Thomas to adjourn. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you so much for...